Having a quorum present, we will start the, open the meeting of the Monroe Historic District Commission for January 5th, 2002. I'm Gary Thompson and I'll be chairing the, the meeting in the absence of Chuck Warner and Erin McGoldrick. We have a quorum with our, our secretary and clerk Joshua and Karen, Karen Woodward, Woodford. And let me read the call on the meeting. On March 14th, 2020, in response to the COVID-19 pandemic and in an effort to reduce the risk of transmission by virtue of attendance at public meetings, Governor Lamont suspended in-person open meetings, open meeting requirements and permits conducting public meetings remotely by conference call, video conference or other technology. A copy of the full text of Executive Order Number 7B, paren one, closed paren, is available for review on the town of Monroe, Monroe's website, www.monroect.org. Accordingly, the town of Monroe has selected GoToMeeting as the preferred technology application to conduct this remote public meeting in compliance with the Executive Order Number 7B, paren one. This technology will permit up to 25 members of the public to participate in real time in public meeting via computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone via the access information set forth on this meeting agenda. It is highly recommended that any interested participant download and utilize the GoToMeeting software applications which are available in the meeting, meeting link below prior to the commencement of the meeting. Each meeting may have unique participation information, including access code, phone number, and a live link. Please be sure that you are assessing the current information for the correct meeting. Notice is hereby given that this remote electronic public meeting shall, one, permit the public to view or listen anonymously, and when permitted, participate in real time; two, be recorded and posted to the town's website within seven days; and three, be made available to public, to the public within a reasonable time in town hall or upon written request. In addition to standard parliamentary procedure, as outlined in this agenda, the following special rules shall apply to all participants. First, please mute your microphone so as reduce background, so as to reduce background noise at any time you are not speaking. Prior to speaking on each occasion, each speaker shall clearly state their name and title for the record. Their use of chat feature are, features are prohibited and will not be considered during the meeting if one you, if in use. Notice is hereby given that only 250 participants may access this remote electronic public meeting at any one time. Access is granted solely by going, by the GoToMeeting technology on first access basis and is not within the control of the town of Monroe. While it is anticipated that the participant limit will be sufficient, if the participants reach said limit, the meeting may be adjourned and continued at a later date using technology appropriate to ensure all members of the public may participate. Having said all that, the, Josh, will you record that we open the meeting at 7:30? And the first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Are there any minutes for review to be approved?
No, no, unfortunately, there are. Yeah, the, yeah, the meeting from last month, which I wasn't really able to record enough of it, and, but sorry, guys, I just forgot to do them, honestly. Work was, work's been very busy lately, so unfortunately, I just didn't do them. Sorry about that.
Okay. Josh, are you missing anything that I can send to you? Follow, follow the agenda from last meeting, and if you are missing any information because you may have come in later, just email me and I'll send you what I have.
All right, thanks.
And I think whatever, oh, the, the, the voting record from last meeting was, has already been submitted, so we're covered there.
Okay.
Okay, the next item, is there anything else on, on minutes? Okay, hearing on, second item on the agenda is a preliminary hearing. This hearing is for the town of Monroe, 7 Fan Hill Road, to replace the roof on the gazebo. The presenter is Chris Nowicki, Director of Public Works. Chris, you have the floor. I understand from, from Chris, if I may first, that there, there is a proposal that will be, that was supposed to have been sent out to us, and I suspect that because Chuck is, has not been feeling well, and he didn't get around to sending it out. So, Chris, you have a floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Chris Nowacki, Director of Public Works here for the town of Monroe. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for your time. As you know, clearly, the gazebo roof is in need of, of dire repair. It clearly does fall within the historic district. So, we have previously, some of you may have seen them, but there have been some proposals that were presented through Vita Stone, three or four years ago or so, that had come forward, really just encapsulating the removal of the existing roof and replacement with an asphalt shingle. So, we have been retasked with looking at this further and updating proposals. So, as we went through the historic district of late, we can see that the, there is a significant use of asphalt shingles throughout. So, we proposed through the contractors, we engaged with them, to, to look at the entire town hall campus, and we have had a significant luck with utilizing and kind of keeping the harmony of the property and utilizing a Timberline Williamsburg Slate Shingle that we've got on the roof of the town hall, and we also basically mimicked that of what was installed prior to the roof being done over at the library. So, we're, we're looking to put in the exact same color and architectural look and appeal and, and fit with everything else that's on the, on the property. We don't expect to have to change anything at all structural, we just want to maintain what's currently there. The trim work that's up and around the fascia, we're going to maintain, we clearly will have to, throughout the process, go through and evaluate the wood and/or the materials that are there and replace that which is rotten, but we intend on maintaining all of the detail that is currently in place around the fascia, around the, the cupola and cap that's on the, the gazebo roof. And the cupola itself, we, we would like to paint the same Notre Dame gold color as that which is on the town hall to kind of just tie the property together even further. And then take the existing light bulbs and fixtures that are in there and convert those over to LED, just for a level of efficiency, but still keeping the same charm that the gazebo has in and of itself. We don't plan on doing any work inside with the ceiling, but we just want to clean it up, power wash it down, and also do some repairs that have kind of been left to the wayside on the steps. So, basically, re-point the steps, re-affix one of the bluestone treads, and then go around and fix the deteriorated brickwork and edging that's allowed the brick on the perimeter sidewalk of the gazebo and grounds to kind of walk off and, and, you know, kind of fault, not fault, disarray, but just, it clearly requires repair. So, I've spoken with Chuck in regards to this, we've, we've looked at the overall gazebo and we're basically the, we're tying this in with everything else that's existing on the property and just trying to update it and, and put it in a position where we can keep it in, in good standing and keep it well maintained. At this point, I'd say, does anybody have any questions?
I had a question about, so the color of the gazebo will change, a part of it, you said you're going to paint gold instead of, it's white now, right? The whole thing is white?
Correct, only, only the cupola cap, only the cupola cap.
At the top.
Correct.
Okay, and it sounds, it sounds good. If you do find any rotted wood in the trim, were you planning on replacing it with AZAC or are you going to replace it with wood or what's the plan there?
The plan is to go back with AZAC and replace it so that it, it, it doesn't further deteriorate. It puts it into a position that's using current technology but still maintaining its current charm. We don't, we don't intend on changing up any of the physical detail to it, we just want to use the availability of, of technology today.
Yeah, the reason I was asking that is because it doesn't make sense to go back to wood again. It deteriorates so poorly and AZAC now, they can kind of imitate any kind of trim detail that's already existing there and make it look good for a very much longer time.
Oh, I absolutely agree, if, at any point when we do any work.
Karen, are you, excuse me, Karen, are you adjusting the use of?
AZAC for the trim, where he said if there's.
Like PVC type material?
Correct.
Yeah, it's a, it's a composite material that it, they can shape it and mold it and into any kind of design, so design would, the design of AZAC can be this, as ornate as you want it. Isn't that right, Chris?
That is correct. That's exactly actually what's called out in detail in his proposal, is to replace any rotten wood trim with AZAC.
It looks just like the wood. You cannot discern that it's not wood from the, even from pretty close up, I have it on my own house. The other question I had is the LED, what is in there, incandescent right now?
Correct. I think we've, we've changed it over to a CFL bulb, but aside from that, it just, we're going to update as best we can.
So, I know that even.
I'm sorry?
The fixture will remain the same?
Yes.
Okay.
So, my question was about that. You know, LEDs have a cool, soft one and one, cool and like a bluish tint or the softer ones, so what was your idea on that?
To be honest with you, the, the LED lighting that was inside the gazebo ceiling, it isn't, it's, it's more so for a, a soft mood lighting, it's not really to make it pop. The four, if you will, colonial fixtures on the outside of the gazebo surrounding on the grounds are really more of your visual draw. So, at the moment, we're, we're thinking that the, the softer light will work, but really putting the bulb in, see what it looks like in conjunction with the existing fixtures. If it doesn't seem to fit, we're, we'll adjust accordingly, but we're not tied to anything specific. It's a, at that point, it's cosmetic, right? So, we're, we're going to see what that, what that coloration looks like.
In my mind, I'm thinking that the softer would look prettier.
I am, yeah, exactly.
Something that's too bright would look kind of odd, but you'll, I'm sure you'll see what.
Right, because if you, we have the, we have the Christmas tree in there now, I just envision having, you know, four spotlights around the Christmas tree, it just completely wouldn't look right. So, we're kind, initial thought is to lean toward the, say, softer or lighter side. Just got to see how that coloration matches with everything else, that's all.
Sounds good. Sounds good to me. You don't have any, you don't have any samples, right, with you? Samples of the material, the roofing or anything?
No, nothing, nothing right now, other than whatever you see on the, the town hall and the library, it's exactly that, Timberline GIF shingle, absolutely, absolutely. It's a, what do they call it? It's a Timberline Williamsburg Slate, so it'll be the exact coloration. And the, the roof at the town hall and the library are, are within the past, you know, less than 15 years, so it's, it's not as though the coloration match is going to be any level noticeably off.
By the way, Chris, you guys do a great job.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that, they're really good.
They are the best in the world, they really are.
Thank you.
Trust me, I go, you know, I work in Easton and.
Gotcha.
You guys are, you guys are number one. They have been for many years.
Appreciate that. It's tough sometimes, a lot hours.
They're so good, they're so good.
He keeps a good eye on our, on our signs around the district.
Thank you for that, too.
Yeah, we coordinated with the state and got that last one by the rotary there, let me tell you.
Chris, I have the one question on, a follow-up question on the, the lights. Just so long as the illumination around the gazebo at night is sufficient, that would be, I, I think that would be the litmus test. I, I'm with Karen, I think the soft light would look better, and I think you, you agree with that, but keep in mind that the illumination around the gazebo is, is the litmus test. You may have, or you may have to use a combination, but it's a trial and error, I agree.
Agreed. We, we will absolutely be actually leaving the, the four posts alone themselves, they'll stand as is, we're just concentrating with inside of the physical gazebo and the roof itself, where we don't intend on doing any fixture changes outside.
That's what I understood, too, because if you were, like, light pollution's always an issue, you know, and so like, putting them or whatever, but right now, if you're just doing the inside, we don't even have to talk about that.
Right, yeah, that would be, anything with the exterior lighting would be a campus, full campus involvement would be a completely, completely different task or a task, let's put it that way, so, just, just the gazebo.
Okay.
Josh, do you have any questions?
Yeah, sure. Really, for me, my question is, with replacing, it's, you said AZAC? The wood with the AZAC, is that, is there any, anything special that you'd have to do to fit that in between? So, are you going to be replacing the whole wooden sections with this, or is it just going to be a one-on-one basis for pieces of wood that have rotted?
Predominantly, what we're, the intention is to replace what is rotten, and we'll get to the point when we look at the overall project and go, you know, are we 90% all AZAC? Then we would look at the cost relative to the budget and say, can we actually do all of it, or just replace the pieces that are rotten and require replacement? It's kind of going to be an evaluation as we move through. And again, the AZAC, we're really only looking to use on the, I'm going to call it per se finish, because you got the fascia there, but then you do have your, your, your finish details as well. So, the, the sheathing on the, on the roof structure will be regular plywood, however, your trim or visible pieces will be AZAC pending their existing condition and need for replacement.
Okay.
Are you able to do that trim in-house? Or does that have to be specially ordered?
The contractor has already looked at it, so I believe he's going to, he's going to either be able to fabricate, depending on which piece it is, there are some that are obviously a little bit more ornate than others, so he, he will, he will order as needed, he's quoted as such, and/or fabricate in-house based on, on, you know, what needs to be replaced.
And he said he can match it.
Yes, he hasn't stated that there's any issues.
Chris, I have. I have two follow-up questions. With this AZAC, will you be painting any of it?
Actually, the AZAC itself is already white and it's through color white, so it matches its current condition. So, if you will, I mean, it is a paintable product, however, depending on its level of need, you may not actually even need to paint it.
Okay, so the, what you're going to be replacing is primarily white, white painted wood?
Correct, the AZAC is only relevant to trim, so the trim itself is, is currently white and/or the detail of the gazebo is currently white, so based on the, let's call it the percentage we need to replace, we'll evaluate and see what it looks like, because, you know, the nails through and such, it kind of, it, it really honestly is, is a fantastic product, it requires very minimal maintenance and very, very minimal finish needed outside of what it is.
What will you be painting?
Just the, just the cap or the dome itself of the physical gazebo.
Oh, okay.
That's all. It's currently a painted product as is already. I mean, I'd love to do it in copper or something like that, but a gold tying it to, it puts it into, it puts it in something that's, you know, at the same point, you want to, you want to look at form and fashion, right? You want, you want to make sure that you have something that's manageable, that is, is maintainable and is cost prudent. So, if, if we can put something and, and, you know, bring the charm of the town hall and the gazebo, tie them together like we've been with the, the color, I'd love to keep the domes together, just because it, it'll, they'll just pop by being, you know, a fresh gold paint to it. So, that's what, that's all we're intending on painting gold.
Will there be any maintenance done on the balusters around the gazebo?
They, the, everything on the, the spindles and the balusters, say, let's say the railings, that we're talking about?
Yeah.
The railings themselves are actually already a vinyl product, so we intend on power washing and cleaning the entire gazebo, the, the concrete, the brick face easily, we don't want to get into any level of the necessity for brick pointing or anything like that. Something needs to be done, I'm sure, it'll, it can be taken care of in-house, however, we, we, we intend on doing it, if you will, a top-to-bottom refresh on it, so power wash everything down, clean everything, fix the sidewalks and the steps and, you know, do a, do a nice little facelift to the gazebo itself.
Very good, thank you. Are there any other questions for him? My final question then is really for Chuck, are you ready to go? Shall we book the, the public hearing for the February meeting?
I have the, I have gone and procured some proposals. We, we have the, if you will, we've done apples-to-apples evaluation of the proposals to, just to make sure we're all talking within the same realm of work, and we have a contractor who is willing to hold his pricing through until April, so I think we could talk offline and see what other additional, anything you may need prior to that type of a meeting, but I would believe pending our conversation, if you folks on the commission have no other questions or pursuit of any other products, which clearly it sounds as though we're in good, we're in good fan, standing here, I would be ready for, you know, talking offline and then pursuing that meeting.
Okay, if you would get in personal contact then with Chuck, give him the green light when you're, when you're ready, and he'll schedule the public hearing. Are there any other comments or questions?
Just one, just, yeah, just one little thing. When you come for the public hearing, I'm sure that you'll have like, an example of, you know, what color gold and, like, at least some kind of little sketchup or something of what it's going to look like, what you're proposing, so that the public can really understand fully what's happening.
Certainly.
That would be, that would be a good idea. And the other thing, the only other thing I wanted to say is, sometimes the white, the bright white of the AZAC is really not the same as the white, there's, I'm an artist, so I know that there's white and then there's white, you know, there's two.
Right.
White is like a variety, so I'm sure you'll have to paint the AZAC, which is completely paintable, only if it doesn't match with the rest of the white, but you'll be able to see that, that will stand out.
Absolutely. My father was actually a classically trained artist, so.
You know.
Yeah, so rest him, but trust me, I would see that myself and know that in the back of my head, he would say, look, you need to fix that, so, no, absolutely, well, we're going to do the work we need to, do the final evaluation and, and just see, because at the end of the day, we, we want it to be a complete project, so it, those are the final details which really speak to the level of workmanship, so we intend to do it properly and paint as needed, it's just to what level are we going to be intruding on the existing materials is all.
Sounds really great.
Any comments or questions?
Is the, the project to replace the brick parts around the gazebo, is that going to be part of this as well, or is that a separate thing?
It, it's all part of the repair work we're going to be doing to the brick walkways, it's not a full replacement, it's just those areas where the edging has fallen away and or over time, the tree and the weather and the water has kind of eroded the surrounding ground, we intend on putting the sidewalk brick surface back into place, re-edging and re-solidifying. There'll be some maintenance, we'll bring, we'll bring Parks and Rec in for some, for some other finish, you know, kind of say grounds maintenance come spring, or in order to follow the project finish, but, you know, the, we're not looking to do any major replacements surrounding it, it's just, the biggest component will be the, the roof removal and replacement and the trim work, and then everything else is just repair.
Okay, so it's just replacing a few things that, or repairing them, really?
Correct.
All right, that makes sense.
Okay, Chris, how, how long do you think this is going to take once you start?
As we get into the season a little bit further, honestly, it's going to depend on, one, when we, we can provide the go-ahead, if you will, to the contractor, and we are seeing even our, in our own work, materials kind of have a bit of a lead time on them now, just with the way that it seems as though, you know, you went into Home Depot and all the materials were gone, right? No framing, lumber, or anything like that. So, we're, we're thinking it should be a three-week process at, at roughly the most, this is an estimate, but we have to sit down with the contractor and we can provide a schedule based on that. But the most important thing is, we have to speak with the First Selectman's Office and, and see what types of scheduled events are currently on the books, and we may have to work around a few things that, you know, clearly don't present any level of a conflict, but we're, we can iron out those specifics as we get closer.
I, I think we're pretty well set then, we have an understanding. If, I think Karen's suggestion of providing some sort of a rendering of what it's going to look like when you get finished, would go, extra is worth a thousand words, it would go a long way so that the public can understand just exactly what we're going to be setting to do.
Okay. I'll definitely connect with Chuck and kind of go through a little bit more detail of what you'd like for the public hearing, and we can bring in some, some, you know, color match rent that would work for the gold and maybe a piece of this shingle or two, and some level of, of the trim and, and take it from there. Okay?
Very good. Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Anybody else that has called in for public comment, I think we can save this part of the agenda then. The third item on the agenda is public hearings, and there are none scheduled, and that's followed by the treasurer's report, very simple, Josh, it hasn't changed since December, so what I sent you is still the status. Or item five on the agenda, the continuing business, Monroe signs, is there anything that either of you have questions or comment on, on the Monroe Center signs?
They still all up, Chris?
They're, they're still all up.
Are they still all up?
They are.
Anything we have to find in the hedges or anything?
I'll tell you.
None as of yet.
Within a day or, or two of every meeting, I drive around to make sure those signs are still there. Within a day or, or two of every meeting, I drive around to make sure those signs are still there.
Oh my God. If any of them go south, it's gonna take so long to make more.
Yeah.
We don't want to do that.
Uh, item number two, uh, our, um, uh, project with, um, Robert Gianini on the, um, the historic barn on his property. There's no news, news coming out of him, uh, uh, since I talked with him last, uh, just before the holiday. Um, and then, um, uh, there's, I, I don't think there's enough of us, um, present to have any discussion on the, um, what we've done with the history boundaries. Uh, other than the tax assessor, the assessor has upgraded all the records that we needed to have it upgraded and new maps, um, I have to have Barbara check on when the new maps will be coming out. Um, the, um, meeting for twenty twenty-one has been sent out. Has everybody, have you two, have both of you received your copies? Yep.
Yes.
Uh, yes, I got mine.
The, um, I don't see but any other callers on, uh, CAT, uh, for, uh, public participation. Do you, do you see any?
I do not, no.
Okay, is there any other, um, business that, uh, we want to discuss? Either of you?
There is one little thing that I wanted to ask Chris while he's here. When the state came in and put in that sidewalk next to the, next to the, um, you know, neck, next to Sippin, oh, what is it? The Masonic Temple or whatever it is? You know what I'm talking about?
I, I do, yes.
You're gonna put up a bench there. Is that the town's responsibility to put the bench up? Or is that, that was that the state that was gonna do that and didn't do it? Didn't follow through? I mean, it's in the minutes even that they were supposed to, well, they were two, supposed to do two things. They were supposed to make it, instead of a regular, uh, cement sidewalk, they were gonna do like a stamped brick to make it look more historic. And they, they were also supposed to put, they were supposed to make it a place where you could rest. Under the trees, they were supposed to put a bench there. And, and neither thing happened, so I don't know whether, I don't know what. I'm imagining that the state chipped out on that. And I'm also imagining that they were supposed to provide the bench, but I just wanted to check with you to see if that was the town's responsibility or if it maybe was the town's decision to not go with the stamped brick because it would be easier to keep clean if it was just plain straight slabs of concrete. Do you have any thoughts on that? It was supposed to be under ring and it was supposed to have a little bench. It was supposed to be stamped concrete to look like bricks.
I will actually have to look into that. Um, I, aside from the, being aware that the project was being done, it really, because it's outside of our right of way, if you will, it didn't really fall to detail level to, to our department that, with that respect. So I will look into, uh, both those things. So stamped brick in the section that led up to the Masonic, because I know it doesn't go across the Masonic, but the section that.
The one that goes up. They were gonna do it on, I think that's town property that goes from.
Along the driveway.
Along the driveway.
Behind, so behind the town hall parking lot there, if you will, that section was what, okay.
Up on the hill there. They were supposed to.
Yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about.
We'll make it look really good. We'll make it stamped concrete. We can do that to make it look like brick. And we can make, we can, we can put a little bench in there so that people could sit, like if they were not involved in the farmer's market, but they, you know, like the spouses sometimes have to wait. There's a place for the spouses to wait up on the hill and just look at the things going on, but maybe hold the dog over there and it's never happened.
I'll look into that. You said you have that, uh, in?
That's in the minutes.
That is in the minutes. That was discussed with the state. I don't, I don't have a copy of that, but it is in the minutes. It's when they first proposed this sidewalk.
I think it even is specified that the state agreed to place the bench halfway between the road and the end of the sidewalk going into the parking lot, um, and it would be on the.
I lost you at the end of that. It'd be rare.
On.
Okay. Uh, I'm taking notes on such. I will look into and speak with the engineering department, uh, for some further detail and we'll definitely get back to you.
Okay, I hated the idea of the sidewalk, okay, because it, it didn't seem to serve a purpose. But if it was someplace where people could be in the shade and sit on the bench, it, it sort of made more sense.
It was a compromise.
And it, yeah, compromise. And they compromised that way and then it never happened. So.
Okay. I'll have to look into that and get back to you.
Okay, great. Anything, uh, any other, um, new business to just bring up? Hearing none, I, I think that, uh, we can adjourn this meeting at eight oh six.